Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Palaca, City of Mission Meeting on April 13th, 2023. We're going to see if the invitation passed.
All right, I'm back. Father, we thank you once again for this day. We thank you for your love, for your kindness, and for the multitude of your tender mercy. God, we pray, dear Lord, that you will look on us. We come together this evening for this session. Pray, God, that you will garner our thoughts. You know the intent. You know every mindset. We need your wisdom and your guidance as we are undergirding the city, God, for your glory. Pray, God, that you will bless and touch. God, even the atrocities that have taken place in our cities in recent days, we ask God for grace and for mercy to be multiplied. And we pray, dear God, for the families affected by these situations. God, that you will intervene and help in certain ways. We thank you for what you're doing and certainly what you're going to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please draw me.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Commissioner Tammy McCaslin.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Lucas Borum.
Present.
Mayor Robbie Correa.
Present.
All members of President accountable. We have a forum here in the chambers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Everybody had an opportunity in the minutes from March 2023. We're up in March 23rd, 2023, regular meetings. Your motion?
Welcome to our crew.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
What are your questions?
On the minutes, page two, down to the bottom.
Ready to begin?
They said that the vote, they can vote to change their rate. Nothing called it, I think it was four one, four one, three two. Did you hear it? Three two one, hold on.
Additional, additional one, Commissioner Jones.
On page two, minutes, yeah, down to the bottom where the motion, well, I process to be done in house. And I have very badly, the second by Commissioner McCaslin. On second discussion, motion passed quarter one, and then motion was passed thirty-two, the number two.
Right, those names, uh, both before, Commissioner Borum, John Liston, so it would be screen two.
Uh, yeah, should be two, down one, my apologies.
Okay.
Okay, fixed.
And then on page three. It did mean, it did say that it was a discussion about admission, this, listing the disqualified. We have done the same. What we said, disqualified at all. It doesn't say that we mentioned, no, we mentioned a lot. So did we make a decision? Did we, what am I, it's not anything at all.
I think there was a lot thrown out, as I recall. Some, one thing led to another than what was thrown out, but more potential disqualified than how you cover all of that. Do you have any clear recognition? City Manager Holmes, I don't think we kind of resolved it because it was just more and more that coming in.
Oh, all right, all right. So we've got the minutes, but I would look with corrections to go to areas. What are you going to say? I was just going to say that there's certainly time for the commission denied to, having thought about that more, to advise. If you recall, we sort of got a little bit sidetracked when it was suggested a disqualifier would be convicted of a felony, and two particular felonies were mentioned, and questions were asked about additional felony, then, then that kind of led to maybe the realization that the two felonies mentioned could not be all of the clues, and it kind of then broke down into discussion, as I recall. So perhaps tonight's meeting, or whenever the commission feels appropriate, you can go ahead and say the disqualifier that you wish that, well, that you wish to adopt, because it's actually going to be you that's making that decision. We can always go back and listen to the record if you'd like, and I assume you did, though, so. Listen to the minute of the paper, I mean.
There was disagreement as to what disqualifiers were, and personally, instead of getting into a, he or this commissioner or that commissioner wanted this disqualifier, I admitted it, rather than it being my own speculation, because as clerk, I try my very hardest to keep my own personal opinions, or what I may have heard one commissioner say, unmicrophoned, or this or that, when there gets to be multiple commissioners talking over each other, I prefer less than more than to put in speculation, first of all.
Almost like a dragon. Yeah, let's put the facts in. So whatever we decide, it's going to be, I think, we either at least have it, because that's what the policy that we're going to change.
And actually, that night, if we remember, Don said that we did want to be substantial with kind of what was disqualifying or not. You know, I think, when you say it, we need to have that discussion and go ahead and identify, but it would just be very awesome.
Commissioner Borum has his hand, James, Madam America, Carisha Borum.
Yes, if you're talking about the hiring process, we are, after we got in the discussion piece, we, 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 I guess we went ahead and we just said that we weren't going to, it was advised by city manager, as well as a city attorney, that we, it would be best that we don't start listing certain things that would be certain qualifiers, because we could, we could put ourselves in a real serious rabbit hole and potential for lawsuits or liability. So that's what I recollect, and so that's all, that's all I had.
So let me make it clear. So we're saying, we as policymakers will not make a decision on the policy to have a disqualifier. So yeah.
No, we're making a decision.
I can.
Kind of going in different directions.
Kind of like now. I think for sake of the minutes and clearing up, that's something that Mr. Holmes said that we can't talk about, but for sake of moving forward and approval of minutes, we need to make a decision.
So with that correction, with the minutes as they are, we had a look in before the correction, do we want to go, with the minutes as corrected?
I'm like, that's friendly.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposite?
They.
We're going to move on to public recognition presentation. First Annual Health Fair, April fifteenth. I'm sorry, April fifteenth, twenty twenty, ten AM to two, HCA Florida Hospital. Is there somebody here from HCA?
There is, Madam Mary. It's Miffy Betts Jones.
Please give your name and address for the record.
So my name is Miffy Betts Jones, and the address is six eleven Dillard Drive, Palaka, Florida. So I am here to, to invite the community to our first annual health fair at HCA Florida Southern Hospital. It will be this Saturday from ten AM to two PM. And there'll be something for everybody. You can look at the flyer. I have some flyers here if anybody wants one. But there'll be something for everybody. There's going to be health screenings, there's going to be information. There's going to be some physician-led discussions, food vendors and other vendors. We have over thirty vendors that are coming out. So we just want to invite the community to this event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're looking at some flyers, so you're looking at some flyers.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to give them the sign?
Yes, yes, okay, thank you. Okay, and we now have a proclamation for Parkinson's Awareness Month. This is France. Um, now, we're sorry, you can't type that up. You want to read the proclamation, please?
When passed, therefore, I, Roberta N. Correa, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, will hereby proclaim the month of April, twenty twenty-three, as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in the City of Palaca, and call upon volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals to work together to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And we commend the increased research, education, community support, and services of organizations, including the Parkinson Support Group of Orange Park and the Parkinson's Foundation for working to provide access to quality and cost-effective care.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
So. Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions? Thank you. Is there somebody here from the Parkinson Support Group in Orange Park? Do you need to make a proclamation? Thank you. And if you'd like to give your name and address, so you can give your words about your organization and your names.
I'm Greg Hummer, one eighty-seven Dover Bluff Drive, Orange Park, Florida. And I'm the chairman of the Target and Support Group of Orange Park, also on the committee of the Parkinson's Foundation, which is a national organization that funds research and development and support groups across the nation. And we appreciate this proclamation. Every six minutes in the country, someone is back north of Parkinson's, something they neurological disease that affects movement and other symptoms causes by people and all the hardships on many families. So we try to provide education and we provide social activities and fun activities for people with Parkinson's. So we want to thank you, and hopefully we can start maybe a support group in this area for people with Parkinson's who are looking for an outreach ownership that they can go on. Would you like to help me on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody else with you that would like to be invited? Come on, come on, yeah, near me.
We're hoping.
We're all going to be here together.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Senator, for the help.
My name is Tom.
City Manager, Administrative Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, two items that I have are a distinct pleasure for me. First, we have with us the person that I'm going to appoint and seek confirmation from you to hire is Ms. Marcia Carthy, C, Ms. Carthy, C-A-R-T-Y, as Finance Director. Could you come forward, Ms. Carthy?
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Carthy is, well, I'm very pleased to announce to you, I believe she's eminently qualified to be Finance Director of the City of Palaca. She graduated from high school in Miami, which Ms. Val appreciated very much. Then she obtained a diploma from a school that's of marginal credentials and qualifications, University of Florida. Bachelor of Science in Accounting, and she then obtained a Master of Science in Taxation from the Florida International University, right?
Yes, sir.
She's a certified public accountant and has been for a number of years. I won't embarrass her, embarrass her by asking her to say how many.
Right.
She's held numerous positions as Financial Director or Directors of Finance Departments in various institutions, including the last four years, if I'm not mistaken, for the City of Chattahoochee, Florida.
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry, Quincy, Florida. Where it comes, get it down from Marianne, I make that drive down ninety, and Quincy, Florida, and then.
Okay.
Um, but Quincy, Florida, where she's also filled in as the, the city manager for about the last month or more.
And even prior to that, for about three months, four months.
Um, so of interest to all of us is the fact that she has basically performed all the functions in a small finance department that are required of our finance department in order to make it work. Budget preparation, audit preparation, and working with the auditors. Um, the, she, they use the ADG system, which we use, and as a matter of fact, I think she uses it a little bit, in a little, a few more functions of it than we do here in Palaca. Um, she handles grant accounts and pension, pension funds.
Yeah.
So in looking at her skill set and her experience base, and then comparing it to the job set that we had, we were just, I feel very fortunate that she was willing to accept our, our position. Think it might have had something to do with family, and of course, my persuasive power, but but anyway, she's agreed to come with us. I think she's going to be willing to start. Um, I said make first, but she, that tweet. And all parents are respectful, the fact that she said she needed to give her employer adequate time to sort of get things squared away, but also, I think, indicative of type of employee she's going to be, she indicated she would work with us in the meantime as well. Move forward, because as you know, our audit is starting, our budget prep is starting, our budget hearings are not that far off. So I can't officially appoint her and ask for confirmation tonight, because technically, she holds an office right now. Finance Director in the City of Quincy, and we don't want to get into that dual office only thing, but um, but in any event, she has, she has accepted our offer, and we're counting on her now. You have anything you'd like to, you'd like to say?
Well, I'd like to say with your permission, okay, that I'm grateful to be here. I'm also very excited to be here as well. I love growing, and I I investigated or researched the City of Palaca before even coming into the interviewing process, and what I saw was that your city is in the mode of growth. And when you're growing, you need lots of attention to detail. You need precise information, accurate, timely. You need to be able to make quick decisions, and you know, I just enjoy what I do. I've been accounting for a lot, a lot of years. I've also been a professor at University of Miami, and, you know, Miami-Dade and so forth. And I just love what I do. That's all I can say. And when I come on board, I bring all of me. I bring a hundred and maybe twenty-five percent of myself, and I give all that I am, I'm able to give to the best of my ability. I love training my staff, encouraging them to be the best that they can as well. I'm a team player. I think everyone is critical and important to the success of an organization. I'm excited to be able to work with Mr. Don Holmes, and I'm looking forward, I'm very pleased with Ms. Ms. Jones for her persistence. And yes, being here at Palaca will not just satisfy me because of my professionalism and my career. I'm very active with FCFLA, you know, I serve members, boards, and so forth. But it will also allow me to be a better mother. I love my children. I love my family, and I do have family members in this environment, and not too far away, my children particularly, I want to be a little closer to. So thank you for, you know, welcoming me here.
Thank you.
Next, I adopted this here, oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do you mind if I introduce you then? So we also have been successful in hiring a public information officer or extending an offer, and it has been accepted. Mr. Peter Willett is in the audience. He currently is the Public Information Officer for the Clerk of Court of St. John's County, but he has a root base in Palaca. He started here with the paper many years ago, as I believe. Worked his way up into various different positions at the paper, and over the last thirty years has developed a network of contacts with news media, including the television press and others in the Jacksonville market. He's also a certified drone pilot and started off his career as a photographer. So he brings all of those tools to the table in order to, and being able to help us in pushing out some of the information that we've been hoping to push out. We did, in fact, ask him, as well as the other applicants that, that we narrowed this search down to, to provide us a one-page strategy outline for how they would address a project of their choice that the City of Palaca might be anticipating engaging in. He did. It was a very comprehensive and innovative strategy that he had devised. He also is very competent with the area of websites and internets. I think he had an internal, internal email system or website system, is it? Am I saying correctly? Internal and external website systems that he's developed, so that the city employees can be able to plug into a website that is basically relevant to city employees and internal matters affecting the city, all sorts of things, whether it be staff meeting policies, those kinds of things, in addition to the external website that the public would be working with. So also, I'm very excited to, to, to be able to hire him, and it's also exciting to know that he's, he's looking specifically to come back to Palaca. He's been here, he liked the field, he went away to the big city to our east, and is looking to come back because of qualities that he found here. So I wanted to make that, that announcement to you as well.
Thank you.
You know, my, as I told Mr. Holmes during the interview process. As I told him during the interview process, I was a twenty-two, twenty-three-year-old kid. When I first came to Palaca, I was in an apartment in Hill Street, and that was a long period of high school, graduated, and over a year. With what it's always seen, but, you know, I have no potential of this town. I love this town. And I'm just happy to be part of it. Can you tell your stories?
Thank you.
Those are two big hires that I believe in big points that we've been able to feel and look forward to what they can accomplish with us. One more item that I'd like the commission to consider, and that is the use of our facilities. And what events we might not charge for, if any. And when I say facilities, I'm talking about primarily price margin. There've been a number of requests to use price margin for different things, and request that people not be charged with the use of the facility. And Mr. Gudright basically asked for clarification from the commission as to, you know, were there certain types of events that the commission didn't want to charge for? And regardless of who was sponsoring the event, is there a class of events that the commission does want to charge for? Understanding that we're going to have money in every event, staff opening and closing and cleanup. So he had, if I would make that, that request of the commission to define that, you don't have to do it tonight, but we will ask you to define it in the near future for his clarification, because he's the one that handled the request, okay? And then with that, having been said, we've got some reports from some of the departments in the spirit of trying to keep you updated with things that are going on. Who wants to lead off?
Captain Correa.
I go real quick. Let's go ahead and probably study people of the situation, please. Perfect, thank you. So I believe that's to go, that you can see there on the right side, but go, thank you for the picture. This is to basically highlight what we're trying to address with the second phase of St. John's Avenue Street State Project. As you can see on the left, the brick intersections have been lowered to meet ADA requirements. And on the right, you have the existing roadway, which is years and years of asphalt overlays. So the next phase, which will probably come before you on April twenty-seventh, will address this, will get a consistent road profile for the entire corridor. I mean, I appreciate it, please. As requested, we have started to upload city project information on the city website. This is a screenshot, just prior to the meeting. We started with some of the most notable projects, as you can see there, CDPG Granite Project, Jenkins Gymnasium upgrades for that, Hank Ryan, and we're trying to get one on there per week. Thanks, Richard, please. And also, as requested, we have begun fencing off all the lay-down yards around city. This is the one at Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street, commonly referred to as the Palm Hall. That is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to mention anything about the gymnasium, the specifically, the timeframe now for our return of our design log and so. Yes, of course. So we are currently working with Passer Row Associates, finalizing construction documents and bid documents. Four weeks ago, they committed us, they would have those documents to us for review. Within a four- to six-week period, we expect to have a meeting with them on Monday, which by the day will transmit the documents. We will start our review, hopefully go out and bid sometime in the next month. But the intent is to get community affairs in Jenkins Gymnasium as soon as possible. And you may have read from your emails with conversations with the county. I've been advised that the county will allow us to begin using the Jenkins Gymnasium. It's, it's, it's a fairly non-controversial use, to the extent that it involved the admin offices. There's a, there's a few more details to work out as it relates to the gym, but with regard to the admin offices, where there are going to be some inspections made by the fire marshal regarding some things such as fire extinguisher doors that open to the outside, exit lights and the fire alarm, and then we'll be able to begin using the administrative offices without having to wait for the entire process of the new roof and the new HVACs and the new sprinkler system and so forth and so on. So that's, that's good news to us. We'll be able to start staffing that building a little bit, which has a number of advantages, as you know, and also make a little bit of room for, for staff at City Hall and also across the street at the end end. So that, that was a development this week, and I have to express my thanks to the county for that position, which is significantly more relaxed than the position that had been adopted earlier by them, from their building department.
Mr. McHale?
Dr. Report.
Good luck.
Good evening, guys. Appreciate you. Chief Taylor can be here tonight. He's at his T graduation. He's a mentor at the high school. So his kids graduate tonight, which is pretty cool. Just a couple of quick things. Recently, we just completed our hazardous material one sixty technician. Five of our people completed that, so they'll soon test for their state certification on the bottom of the line list. That's a great thing. We completed forty hours of vehicle machinery rescue last month. Chief Taylor just finished his fire off, which is a pretty big accomplishment. And we started our asset audit last week.
Last week you started?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Captain, you come.
Good evening. I'm here for Chief Shaw tonight. We had a prior engagement with, I believe, State Powell. Just a couple of things that we have to share with y'all tonight is, one is our current range, gun range project. This is a three-stage project that we started just here in April. The first stage is us working on, um, the first stage is us doing some repairs and height extensions to our farm. The second stage is going to be, it's actually part of the agenda tonight, is a training building that we are hoping to get through the school district, donated from the school district. It's a part of the consent agenda first night for approval. And then the third stage of the project is going to be some cosmetic changes, security with fencing, and regalia control. We partnered with our other city departments, the county, and the sheriff's office to facilitate this project to reduce cost. So if you have any questions on that, we want to answer them.
And if you have any question?
Secondly, it is up.
Um, secondly, is upcoming community events for us. Uh, we have a code enforcement meeting that we're going to be participating in Thursday night uh, for the light properties uh, with Mr. Gudry. And then we have several upcoming POW events. Uh, we are currently taking applications for the summer camp. Summer camp this year is going to last eight weeks, Monday through Friday from seven-thirty in the morning until three-thirty in the afternoon. And the cost for the camp is two hundred dollars per child for the entire camp. There are going to be some sponsorship opportunities, um, but we are asking uh, the community as well as any of our city leaders that know someone that may need a sponsorship, um, to contact Captain Williams. Um, and he'll, he has additional information for those. Um, as part of the POW, we are kicking off esports during the summer program. There is no cost to parents to sign the youth up for that. We're also going to be running two different sports skills camps during the summer. One is for basketball and one is for soccer. Again, there's no cost for those two camps. And the parents can sign youth up for these programs online at pow dot league apps dot com. Uh, I left a copy uh, up there on the guys for you guys, um, for our crime stats. And currently for the year, we're at two percent reduction. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Just a quick update from the HR standpoint. Um, at current, uh, we have seven departments that are full staff, um, complete. Um, we have seven departments that still remain with vacancies. Um, I am currently onboarding one refuse collector and fire writers, a finance director, facilities labor work, and a street supervisor. Um, I would like to take this opportunity since February to welcome new employees that we have, um, have come aboard at the city. Gary Newell, our solely superintendent, Seth Wet Wet Wilk, a wastewater treatment plant operator trainee, Levi Williams, a wastewater treatment plant mechanic trainee, Frank Lucille, a fire writer, Isaac Johnson, a refuse collector, Nathaniel Corresh, police officer, Christina Underby Grant, a police officer, Caleb Walker, water, um, water and sewer utility maintenance trainee, Bill Handy, our D O C inmate crew supervisor, um, two, Peter Willett, which we spoke about, public information officer, and Quinn Darius Lampley, a refuse collector. Um, all of those people have been employed since February, since our last update of March to the current date. Um, while we have onboarded and all of those people active, we've had one retiree, resigned five positions and two positions term. So we're still working and finding ways for retention here at the city, because we're bringing them in, but we still have people going out. So we're trying to find active ways to retain our employee, um, as we are getting them in. And it's all happening.
Thank you. Mr. Gudry?
Uh, can you give me that? Uh, to piggyback on what um, Tommy Newton said about the light uh, form next Thursday, we'll put it at Pride Law Center, uh, that is, that is a different area right then. I would have rented a newspaper. So we encourage communities to come out and hear, and just educate on what's probably asking for and code enforcement for me. And then Donnie will be there and also all of our employees will be there. Uh, as of today, the initial letters went out to uh, all the citizens of Blackcomb, for the show, everybody here probably received one. The mall has been flooded with phone calls with questions and concerns. As I told Mr. Holmes today, uh, most of the calls were good calls. Thank you. Appreciate what you've done. We did have a few that had some issues and concerns about normally why we're picking on them. But uh, we gave them the understanding of what we were looking at, what we were doing, and most of them were okay with that. Uh, tomorrow, the uh, the ten that we picked out, ten properties that we picked out that were major violations, will go out, the letter will go out tomorrow. Uh, and then we will work those cases as we get the tax uh, cleared out of the bank of those things and we'll work those situations. Pushing the gears to uh, recreation, uh, we're finishing up deep ball disparity, uh, to turn out about forty-five kids in the program, and we're going to start our mobile rec in two weeks. So uh, Miller May will start our mobile rec going. I think the first one to shoot will be rags there, communities of our neighborhood. And uh, and we're looking forward to better days. We got that monitor about being able to sort, they are not able to set up over the deep.
I have a question going back to um, the uh, meeting for next Thursday. Uh, I've got stopped several times with regards to, uh, a lot of people want to be there, so can we make sure that we have the Zoom so people that can't physically be there be um, able to log on via Facebook or some kind of other method?
You definitely get this, right?
Sunny, are you good with Zoom at Rush Park then?
I can be. This is the first I've heard of the quest, but I can make it happen.
My question is, do we have the infrastructure there now with this point? Are we square? I know at one point there was an issue with our connectivity there. Are we good with that now?
As far as I'm aware, connectivity is good. We, we had our inauguration there in January. Did anything change?
No, everything.
I mean, I'll have minor questions to get with you after the meeting, but I can do that.
Okay. Um, in reference to light program, um, if you can, have some type of illustrational guideline that folks can go on. I got phone calls as well, and I'm trying to explain to them what exactly going to constitute light. Quite sure that's what your calls are about. So, so, so clearly define it. We can do that in a meeting. Clearly define what you're calling light and what's going to constitute some type of action, because people are, are saying, hey, if I open up my yard, more receive fines and, you know, they don't know. So, yeah, I know it's a whole list, but you have some kind of guideline. If not, oh, they're going to keep calling in. And it may not be the people that go to the meeting, you know, they're, they're going to be there, but other folks want to ask me if it's something that we can either put it online as well or in the newspaper, publish that, so. You know.
You are going to appear on the radio, correct?
Yeah, we're going to be on the radio as I'm speaking. Also, we got a paper we created to, to highlight the top five major violations that we normally get. Uh, that will explain you exactly what we're looking for. We also have a presentation that's going to have a breakdown the white period of the three different tiers that we have, tier one, tier two, tier three, so you'll know where you're following that and then different step that comes with those different tiers of how you do, how many clients.
Any other questions, Mr. Gudry? Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Madam Mayor, we share some of the other implications. So hopefully be a very brief update. Um, a lot of the projects that I've talked about before are of course ongoing, including Wawa. And we'd like to point out that contrary to some comments, negative comments on social media, man, recently, all of those not gone anywhere. We have our mission to complete that project and um, the sign that's out in front of their property that's available is referring to, it's an opportunity to, uh, for Wawa to direct people to other properties they may have that they might be interested in investing. So the first update I'd like to give you is on our cultural resource survey. We are looking at the both, of course, both the north and south of store districts. That fieldwork is almost complete in those districts. We expect to have final reports ready for V E O by May. And uh, we recently received a site plan review for take five oil change should be located on the site of the Messers Bait Store at nine three four State Road nineteen. We'll be looking at that over the coming weeks. And just the day before yesterday, we received an annexation request for seventy-nine-nine three St. John's Avenue, which will be a mixed mobile home use, mobile home park and commercial uses. They are proposing a hundred homes, fourteen storage units, ten RV storage lots. This is a partial conceptual plan for the property of the residential side. The property is actually over eighty acres. Probably half of it is wetlands, and so the residential will be on the eastern end and the commercial will be on the western end of the property. And that is off of Old Wolf Bay Road. So it's between Old Wolf Bay and St. John's Avenue.
This is by the same developer that developed Villa Farms. Oh, that's by the new school. Not the school.
By the reading, yeah. And as Mr. Walker mentioned, same developer of Villa Homes, it will be a very similar concept.
At least has been working that project for a couple, three months.
Yeah, several months. They've been, and they've been working with staff closely to make sure that they, uh, meet requirements that you know, probably for P U Vs and, uh, is there?
So that probably go from St. John's Avenue all the way back to Old Wolf Bay?
Um, yes. So this is actually turned around a little bit. That line on the, on the right-hand side is actually Old Wolf Bay Road. And north is to the left. So Old Wolf Bay, that side will be entering off of Old Wolf Bay Road. But on the commercial side, that will only be entering off of St. John's Avenue. So it's a, it's a big, long, big rectangle, but then it's got the two little connections to the different roads. Okay. In the last three months, we have um, created nineteen planning cases. Fourteen of those have, have gone to the planning board and will come to the state commission shortly. Um, fifteen historic renovation certificates of appropriateness have been taken in. And sixth of the case, those planning cases are annexations. We've done nine zoning verification letters. Um, in the building side of things, we've done seventeen building permits with one major. Um, several signs. We've completed the setup for the scanner and plotter and our staff will be working on spending a couple hours, several hours of late a week over scanning old documents and getting them set up in digital format. Um, and then.
Which is, I don't, I, I think you need to emphasize that. Uh, once that gets done, you'll be able to actually go to your historical records and files and do so in an organized fashion, whereas right now, uh, it's a Easter egg hunt.
Every time. It's been a long time coming, every time, right? Um, we have also, staff has also um, made all of our applications AD accessible and placed them on our website. So then they're all available there. Um, and we are working on cleaning up our VTR records. We've got many records in there that have been inactive since the nineties. That haven't even, you know, no reason to keep them. Um, and then we are also, will be bringing before you a discussion of merging or blending our planning board and our zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals has been met in over five years. The planning board has already indicated that they would be willing to revise their duties to take that on. Um, I have spoken with at least one member of the Z B O A. There are, there will be details to work out, um, to figure it out. And, and I would also be open to your comments on that process as a condition.
The problem is when you get, when you ask people to serve and they volunteer and you don't use them for five years, it loses interest. That's tendency contagious. So we're trying to develop a way, if you can, people engage if they will, to spend their time and give their talents to the city on a volunteer basis. It's, I think it's important to keep them engaged.
And then we also give staff one less work advantage. And then lastly, I am right now working on readying our F, not R F P, it's actually R F Q for continuing services for comprehensive plan updates, um, and other planning services as well as inspections. And that will also come with you later on.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Walker? Thank you. Mr. McMillan?
As our operations manager do our update, good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Sunny? Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, we're just going to go over a couple of the extracurricular activities that Public Works is doing above and beyond our normally daily work that we have. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Okay, so we have the Hank Bryan Park. As you can see, we removed some of the outdated, non-compliant jungle gym equipment, uh, just recently. Uh, tore apart pieces. We ended up keeping the, the head.
I was going to say, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, over Public Works. It was kind of sad, you know, the whole process, but it went well. And it looks good. So as you can see, they're removing, uh, in Hank Brad Park, removing all the old six-foot sidewalks throughout. He kind of kept some of the new ones, somebody on one where he put some sod down, um, fifty eighth street. Uh, they pulled out the sidewalk on that side and here's some of the new eight-foot sidewalks that they're reinstalling into the park, uh, as we speak, so. That, that's some more sidewalks. Coming down off of grill. Uh, Dunham Street Road Prep is complete. We're waiting the base and the pavement. Um, really not much to add to that right now. Okay, we have our, the new dumpsters have come in. We're getting them prepped and ready to go out to start replacing, as you know, a lot of them are in bad shape, so. It knows. We're working on getting our shops together and organizing everything at the Public Works, so. We did all the mulching down at the riverfront. St. John's River Center. And the river center, we're getting ready. It's prepped and ready to go to start doing everything as far as getting the drywall and everything deleted. So we're hoping to get that started within the next two weeks.
So is that, that drywall removed, removed for the mold eradication?
Yes, that's correct.
And how much was that? Like, is one wall or what? What do you got? How much space is that?
Almost every room in the entire building, there's over a thousand square feet of drywall. I believe it's forty-eight sheets, well-put sheets is what we mean.
That was in the scope of work, right?
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, that's about it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Let's say, um, since that, thank you so much for the updates. I, I don't know that, well, I can probably speak for the rest of the mission. It's very much, um, appreciated, uh, and keeping us in the loop of all the things. Uh, I know that I made the request and since then I've not had to make it again, which is a good thing. So I'm able to answer not only questions that come from citizens, um, but just, I'm able to answer questions that I have for myself. So I'm appreciative for all the hard work that you have been putting into making the reports. And again, thank you so much.
I think we all agree. Thank you. Um, moving on to part of the comments. I'm going to open the floor up in a moment. So you have some requests. What has found? From Mr. Bickers? Just give me name and address for the record in three minutes, please.
Ask Hilltakers, two zero seven North Eighteenth Street. My first one is about you. You have a three-minute time, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of that.
You have three minutes?
Yes.
Congratulations. The thing for every one of us, because I've been observing you and you love it, you're doing good. There's certain people who are the whole word.
But I'll turn around that, thank you.
And you have people come back and we go. I asked you the same thing. You said no.
Then, then that's my hour. If I did that, I would work them.
Okay, I think you should be treated equal.
Absolutely.
Okay, next thing is that call play does not represent us people, the Black community. Call is an opportunity, not a visionary. Even the people that, that I saw, central parents, I saw for the people on the train coming through here. Then he comes here, he wants to change his position on that thing. The next thing is that if I don't, this is my way, I just don't agree with what he stands for. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Pop? Get name and address for the record and we'll keep it to three minutes.
Get a name and address for the record and we'll keep it to three minutes, please.
Much, uh, Sam Carr, one oh eight River Side Drive, Satsuma, town market thirteen on the river. Uh, here to tell you some good news, we're, we're prodding again this year. And so, uh, the, uh, St. John's River Park product will be, uh, held again, starting, uh, uh, on the seventeenth, that's Monday, I believe. And, uh, that part of it will be the education process and we have, this will be our seventh year, sixth year doing the education program. And, uh, this year we'll have four thousand second graders that we've taken uh, and taught them about our St. John's River and about William Marchmont and the heritage of this town. And, uh, paper for a boat ride. Many of them is a very first boat ride, so we're looking forward to that. On, uh, Fri- on, uh, Saturday is the day we invite the general public in. We had about a thousand people last year. And we expect more than that this year. And, uh, we will have our, uh, the private placa boat ride. We'll have five of those this time instead of four. And we'll have, uh, uh, many other, uh, things going on, paddles, uh, bike rides, uh, and then Sunday is our symposium for our scholars and to, to do that. So, uh, this all started here in this room, uh, ten years ago. When we, uh, established the Marchmont Trail in Plutman County and with the city's help and the county's help, uh, we, uh, we did that and then it became a national recreation trail. And so it's something very, very proud that, that, uh, or likely should be very proud of. And it's something that involves a whole lot of people in this community. Last year, the majority of people that came to the St. John's River Marchmont probably were not from Plutman County. In fact, we took bus rides and in the bus rides, there were only three people on the entire bus ride from Plutman County at all. And then the same thing with the paddling events and, uh, and the symposium, the majority of people that were at these things were not from Plutman. No mean Plutman, I don't care, but it means there are people outside of Plutman that wanna come here. So it's a really good map and it's, um, it's something we're looking forward to every year. This is our eighth annual event. And, uh, we want to invite you all to our VIP product, which is on Friday night. And so, um, and that'll be in front of the River Center. River Center's not open, so, uh, when you read this, it'll be in front of the River Center. We have a new staff and we'll have some ice cream and, uh, and beverages for you. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Alan Sheffield? Name and address, please, and three minutes now.
Sheffield, five one two one oh Park. Placca. Uh, two things, quickly. Um, one, I'd like to respectfully ask if, um, uh, item I, whether it was twenty-three, are maybe able to be removed from the consent agenda because that's dealing with one lot. The next item on the, in regular business, they have a whole proposal deals with all three. And so if, if you would consider moving that through the consent so that you could consider the, the other item we're doing. The, the, the second matter is something I, I'm not even asking for answers on right now, but I, I think in the spirit of, uh, how you guys are, uh, are dealing with process and working on improving how we do things in the city, um, one of the things I, I wanted to stress that we've gotta be about making the commissioners aware. You guys need as much information, uh, to make these calls and decisions. And in this process with having a call, um, even my experience, that hasn't been the case. Uh, for instance, in, to make a, a letter of intent back in November, following up with the staff back in December, uh, that never got to your, your, your attention. I, I attended a meeting in, in February then where you actually made the decision to go, go ahead and move away from the bid process, go with the realtor. Um, and I, I said, well, wow, I never heard anything back or, uh, and so they made that decision with, without even considering, um, a vote by a purser. And, and so I ended up finding out after that meeting that you guys never received or were made aware of that letter, so. I just wanted to, I'm, I'm not asking for explanations or anything like that, but I just wanted, in the spirit of improvement, make sure that you're requesting and city staff are giving, even if they don't agree with the proposal, make you aware of, uh, of, of what's out there as a potential opportunity so you can make the progress, thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Grace, the partner beautiful.
Nicole Grace, the second director, the second beautiful. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that we are, uh, interested in cleanups all over and are initiating, um, now that all the intersections are done in, uh, Saint John's Avenue section to do cleanups there on the weekends. And we are more than happy to provide supplies and support for any groups, whether that be municipal, um, community groups, civic groups, or even individuals that are interested. People in beautiful looks at, uh, right of ways, parts, uh, with permission of public works there, uh, as well as, um, just public areas in general. So we do not go into private areas, but we're looking at public ones. Um, and, and like I said, we've got a lot of individuals that will come. I have a cemetery that, you know, um, not claimed, so if you wanna go out there too, you've got a lot of places to do it and we've got the supplies for it. Thank you very much. Oh, and, um, tire amnesty day is coming up on the twenty ninth. We have two left this year. So the twenty ninth, you have up to twenty tires per resident that can bring them in and they said per resident, not per address. So very specific, a few questions about that. Uh, they just ask that they be car tires or like trucks and they not be, um, that they be clean tires. So tires that don't have cement in them or don't have their rims. Rims, I think you can either sell or, um, bring down for scrap, which we appreciate, that's recycling. But, um, that's gonna be coming up on the twenty ninth. It's gonna be out on the landfill, so if you have a buddy that's in town that had maybe a trailer and, uh, the good their hearts wants to take out some tires. I know that there's at least one lot that I drive class almost every day and I seen it go from one tire for the house to two and today it was three. So that is one in two weeks gone by. So they're out there and we had a solution from them. Thank you. Thank you.
It's the best.
Hello, my name is Mr. Zenny Best. I live in two hundred eighty drive into Happy Florida. And I'm with the Hump Consumer Hall at this point. Uh, I wanna thank you guys so much for the progress we've done over the last ten years. Uh, we've had the, the city council, you know, the meeting on the twenty seventh with Mr. Breck, the director of the clubhouse in, in days ago. Uh, Plutman County is ready. We need an international clubhouse here. People are gonna have to be mentally ill with nowhere to go. You wind up in jail or a hospital. Uh, so, uh, welcome to the mental health, uh, uh, international clubhouse, change my life. Uh, and I can't, we have, as we started out with nine, when I started here, now we have eighteen clubhouse in Florida. Please let Plutman County be the nineteenth clubhouse in, in Florida. Uh, so solely need, those getting more out in the corners will change. Uh, it doesn't have to happen. If you hurt girls, people, we have to. Not just the, the person with the heart. The person's been on the corner with a cup for, for change, image. We don't have to stand with them. That's a, that's a disgrace to our activity. You take this person, you see what's wrong with this person. At housing, they have some place to go. Uh, we have food, you have children, I guarantee. This is what clubhouse is doing. It's you got the, when you have transitional and vulnerable people that get illnesses. We give you work so that you don't lose social security if you have it. You keep your income. No one else are you, they don't take your social security away or your means to stay alive, boy. That's how I got to Florida. Uh, now that I'm here, I'm trying to spread the love. Uh, there's so many kids, we had two kids here graduating who's back. Uh, there in my mind. Somewhere in there, there's maybe just one. If we get help at one. And we have a program now where, uh, people would imagine this is, we go out to the schools, we talk to the children because they don't know anything about medicine. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Twenty seven, they just might be from Pearl Beach, explaining about the issues. Thank you so much.
First question for the one. Ms. Roach? Well, it was actually for seven. Okay, I was thinking of seven. Thank you. This, um, this Grace, again, you're up for the uncomfortable story with five and.
Hello. Uh, my name is Brianna Harris. I'm two thirteen Madison Street. I am the president of the Plutman School Society. And I wanted to invite everyone in the public to our April meeting. We are going to have front pitcher Bill Slattery. Um, he's going to come and share Florida baseball from Little League to um, pitcher for the St. John's River State College to Stetson Patterson.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Right there.
Um, all the way up to the Major League Baseball with Baltimore Orioles. On Saturday, April fifteenth, is going to be at eleven A M. And it's gonna be over at the Baltimore Holland House, which is located at one hundred Madison Street. Um, in addition to that, we will have a tent at this year's Marchmont Pollock. So if you guys like to come down and visit with us, we'll be there as well on April twenty second. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for general public comment?
One more word.
I'm nervous about the time.
Please bring somebody, which is so important. Please bring somebody who's so important.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Best. Mr. Paul? Name and address for the record, three minutes, please.
Rick Paul, thirteen oh five South Fourteenth Street. I do have a, just a comment about number six, line item I. Uh, my wife and I looked at that property and made an offer on the separate lot. Uh, and got that in and then we went back and went through, came to call, looking to make it a residence. So we thought it would work if we put a porch out the side facing the empty lot. You know, fence the thing in and of course, uh, made an entry door to the north there facing the empty lot. Add a porch, nice windows, and then put a garage in on the second. Uh, then I found out that the, the offer didn't go through. And, uh, so we stopped thinking about it. And then I saw in the newspaper fairly recently where, um, that the individual who's, uh, interested in the lot is gonna keep it together, which I thought was fantastic, cause I think it ought to be kept together. Uh, but that the use wasn't gonna be residential, it was gonna be commercial. And I thought six months of the placate daily news got it wrong.
Well, I didn't know who got it wrong, but that's not accurate.
Okay, so I was just.
I wanna discuss it.
Based upon that information, I was gonna say we were ready, willing and able to pay cash to keep it as residence and keep it all together as one unit. So, um, anyhow, that was just my public comment about that section.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Paul, when was your offer made?
Uh, the offer was made within three days of it hitting the market. So I was one of the.
Do you have a date? Give me a.
Uh, no, sir, I don't have any.
One month.
What was committed first, whenever the.
What first was you mentioned on the email?
First listed about a month, month and a half ago.
You made off about a month and a half ago?
It was a sealed bid. So, um, and then we had the chance to increase the bids without knowing, of course, what everybody else was thinking on it, but I thought keeping it all together was very important. So we were actually gonna keep it all together and make it a residential property.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
With that said, we have closed public comments. Um, and we are going to move on, onto the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda excluding item I for discussion.
Okay, we have an motion to approve, voting that I in the I.
They also. Also item B. So B.
Yes, and dog.
Yes, and dog. Anything else? Any other question?
Uh, also, item G, what's the question?
Wait now, I'm sorry, again, I need you.
G, dog.
Dog. Thank you.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda excluding items D, item E, G and item I for discussion.
Okay, second, okay. Um, first item, adopt resolution twenty three, read off seventy nine.
Oh, wait a minute, you haven't voted on the consent yet, have you?
I'm sorry. Um, on favor?
Alright.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you. Sorry. Um, Ms. Grant?
Thank you, item B, Madam Mayor. A resolution of the City of Placca, Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget to transfer thirty-eight thousand for general fund reserves to River City, I mean, sorry, River Center Maintenance Line, providing for some reserves.
Mr. McMillan?
Good evening, again. Um, so the transfer funds is intended to allow us to accommodate the repair of the drywall, level by finish on the painting, additional repairs associated with the restrooms, hours that were damaged and removed, the drywall behind them. Uh, damage framing within the walls, damage to the roof, insulation in the walls and above on the ceiling, uh, repainting of the ceiling and any other miscellaneous things that may come up with reconstruction.
So, so I, just going into the reserves to, um, get out thirty-eight thousand dollars on that. You're right, it's an entire rebuild inside of that facility. Um, and then, you know, we just paid fifty-seven thousand dollars to get the mold out of there. My question is, I actually thought that was included when I voted on that mold, um, excavation was to R and I, remove and reinstall. So, um, that's a lot of money. That, that's what was almost hitting a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for that. And being that we had estimates of four, a lot cheaper. I just, I just wanted to actually be clear that that's what really happened. That's what we have to do. And you said some of the damage was done removing the, uh, mold, the toilets and stuff, that's what you just.
Well, some countertops, so there were some, I believe there were Cypress countertops that were inbuilt into the, the opening and as, you know, demolition comes through, the opening isn't exactly square, so to remove it, um, it had to be broken a little bit, so we're trying to reach out to a local cabinet maker to reassemble the, the Cypress countertop that were there. If not, we'll have to come up with an alternative. Um, other damages include a lot of metal framing or the high act, which was attached to the masonry. Some of the drywall, you know, had, had soaked water and began to rust a lot of that framing, so there's a significant amount of in order to reattach drywall to it.
So, alright, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I mean.
Okay.
So just to be clear, the fifty-seven thousand dollars to get rid of the mold was just to cut out all the drywall and treat it?
Correct. Just remediation, um, and, and testing to accommodate, you know, and verify that the mold wasn't remediated. The reconstruction budget really was unknown, um, based on what the remediation scope would be. You know, we, we could see, you know, a small evidence in, in one area, but as you can see on that, that north wall, almost the entirety of the wall had to be removed um, to, to excise the, the mold that was found during the remediation process. So reconstruction, I mean, it, it, it was a question mark going into it. And that's why that bid was just put out as remediation services and intending to go back and reassess what was removed afterwards.
There's really no way to know though, when you start going down the road, how much is protected.
So city manager, your question here is about, um, going into the reserves, any reservations? Of doing that, are we okay financially to, I mean, I, I just, if you're going to the reserve and doing this project with that one, I just wanna know. I just want to know how we would reserve.
The reserves are still very healthy. I can't give you a specific amount, obviously, without a financial correct for that information. It's not as easily readily available as it was before. But the thirty eight thousand dollars, this is a budget amendment. And I guess that's come out of reserves, doesn't even specifically state that in the resolution. Is that where it's coming from? Do you have any idea what our reserve net will be after that thirty eight is out of there?
Last time I did the calculation, we were sitting by around twenty six percent, well above the.
Think our minimum is sixteen percent. So we're at twenty six percent on the reserves right now. This was one of those, it it wasn't budgeted. So we either don't do it or we take it out of the reserve because there's not really another place to take it from. We had that discussion before. I mean, I have many misgivings as a lot of you do in terms in terms of that that building. Hopefully, this, the repair that was last made is one that will last a while. I think we've got about three plus years on the agreement to maintain it in its present form and its present purpose. And then it's our building and we can do what we, what what the city can do, what it feels necessary with the building at that point. But right now, we were sort of in that dilemma of you've got the building. We either do the mold remediation, and as you know, we've looked at that three times for bid, was it Jonathan? Because the numbers, the numbers and the bid specs and what was being provided to us by way of responses just continually were questioned by other bidders. By, you know, we matched specs with the bids that were coming in until we got this last bid. I think you said somewhere around fifty seven thousand dollars, which included bringing everything up to current acceptable standards for public buildings. That included air and 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 all the cleaning of the interior materials. So then, as you indicated, we ended up with the removal of all that, all those materials, drywall and so forth. And now, if, you know, for us to get the thing back in operation, we're faced with having to better contract for the repairs, mostly mostly drywall. But there's also exhibits, right? That are that had to be removed because they, some of the exhibits were deemed contaminated as well by the mold remediation crew. So, you know, it's, there's, it worked there.
Would that be something we would have to replace as well with this?
As I recall, the agreement is to be called for them to, as I recall, basically put exhibits in the building at their expense and maintain them. So I haven't been in touch with GP on Jonathan Hans.
So we plan on reaching out once we completed the remediation. When we started this process with Georgia Pacific, they anticipated updating the exhibits during the term of the center.
And my final question regarding to reserve. I know we talked about the the dock, repairing that and then more. And I should have asked before and reported. Did that reserve project go well?
So it's currently budgeted at a better place, sir. None of it is coming out of general fund as it sits. And we do anticipate some of those repairs will be FEMA eligible for reimbursement.
What's the best only action we don't?
It's currently in bid, I believe it's closing on day fourteen, tomorrow, actually. I'm trying to boardwalk. The memorial bridge is closing and actually just an update. The city docks repairs will be posted hopefully next week, provided we can look at the paper timeline.
So thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
What's next, Chief?
What, the chief?
Not the chief, but.
No, not very.
Um, do you read chief's? Are we voting on?
Well, we need to vote on that, please.
Okay. When you call in, spring no, and Commissioner, did I hear he start to do a motion? I don't think it was seconded before. Okay, all in favor? Any opposition? Okay, thank you. Moving on to chief.
Thank you, sorry, I just recorded my. Thank you, this is resolution twenty twenty three R eighty six, a resolution of the City of Placca, Florida, granting release of the lien assessed eight oh one North eleven Street, Placca, Florida, for complaint number twenty eighteen, three zeros, eleven, and providing for scrimmages.
Mr. Cavan?
Oh, yes. This was eight oh one North eleven Street is up, this lien right here was actually one of the A D P cases that we knew of several years, several months ago. We talked about fifty seven money case that had A D P that we were trying to clear up and fix. And we're trying to go through those and make sure they was. They actually, the relative extent of this right here. But when we did our homework on this case right here, we realized in documentation in the A D P system, there was not enough clarity to really keep, to hold to this this lien. But since then, we have already opened up another case back in twenty twenty that is running currently that we have documentation that supported documents of the lien running now currently. So the A D P system is something that we've been trying to either go through slowly and fill all those records. So they're very unclear and they date back to two thousand and eight. So it's kind of hard to get all of the information. But we did a case on this in twenty twenty and the A D P case that they had back in eighteen. But what they said, we know that that was already brought in current, but we have no documentation or pictures to support what they had in that box. And then we had nobody to really reference to what they thought they saw during that time, right? We thought it best to exonerate this one since we already had an active case going on, an active case going on that we have documentation that supports the case that we have on file. If that's what's being done, and it's currently still running at about forty, fifty one thousand dollars in check.
So if we wouldn't exonerate this lien, estimate where would that money be at?
That money right now will be a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars.
Which we would probably possibly get, which would be fifty thousand, if it's fifty percent as we have in policy, right?
I mean, if you really want me to be honest with you, of that price of that, that land right there, I feel it wasn't going to be careful. But yeah, possibility of a hundred fifty. And right now, when this due lien we had pointed at, what fifty one is changed, so we, we pretty much right where we would be at with the lien to do fifty percent discount.
Right, with with Black, Black project. Straighten it for the long. Um, that will then remove the foreclosure property.
Yeah.
So therefore, that'd be property that we could actually own the surplus out.
But I believe the lien we run in that is removed to foreclose.
Yeah, but that, I had thought about ten, that person, somebody gonna buy it and go come in and ask for forgiveness, then they get fifty percent of that. I told, do we have to buy it? Is this an actively remove this? I'm asking because that's going to influence my.
Well, I mean, we updated from my, from my knowledge that we did have a valid offer from the back of November of twenty twenty two. She's actually asked enough to do a lien reduction, which, which I got told her, you can't do any kind of reduction until the property's in compliance. So the properties are running currently with fine daily fine fee of a hundred dollars a day. But the reason why we wanted to remove the other one, we had no documentation to support what the fine said. And then if my staff was not hearing that was brought up, I couldn't support it today.
But, but I do see documentation, I saw documentation that they did, but they noticed this property. And I don't know.
I'm very, very too dragged in the breed, but dragged in the breed running by, nobody had a re follow up inspection when it was brought up. You know, in twenty twenty, when I went out there with a case that I thought of myself, it was a plan for that. But since then, we don't have no way of then when it came into place. And the supporting document that come with that in that in A D P is definitely not enough, or you didn't have enough team. The fact going, we have an active case on it that's beaten up, that we know is running and I have documentation and supportive documentation to fight this question.
Final question. Did the owner tell you that they're paying into the fines? Did they provide?
Not the original owner. Did the owner of the party in two fifty five in November?
That's good. Mm hmm, please, one. They got.
Do we have a motion? Motion. All in favor? I, any opposition?
No.
Um, L, Ms. Grant? I.
So.
I, I.
I have a question with regards to the protocol of how it should be addressed. Should, I mean, are we going to talk about seven first? And then come back to this or?
I I would assume that you would simply move sub paragraph I of the consent agenda to seven and and discuss I as an independent item as part of seven. And then depending upon what you do with seven, you would have I have been addressed, that would be my suggestion.
Then we'll move right on to item seven and do that.
So as you are aware, we have been in the process of attempting to spell Hammacall. And as part of that process, it was suggested by the realtor after our first round of bids, which were low comparatively, that we separate, that we perform a lot split, create a buildable vacant lot adjacent to Hammacall and then basically reconfigure the Hammac, the property which Hammacall sits on. So that you'd have two lots instead of the three that were there before. And sell the vacant lot and then sell Hammacall with the property that's that it sits upon. The item I that we now moved and to discuss to to paragraph seven was a contract for thirty thousand dollars on a cash basis for the use of the lot, the vacant lot that our lot split would, lot split would create, it would be used for recreation, it would be for residential purposes. And would give you, it was a standard closing thirty thousand dollar sale price. We had a proposal for Hammacall in addition that was the, I think, you know, Mr. Paul mentioned that that it's a better proposal and the realtor come back to him and said, we've got competing proposals, I think, that are in the same amount. And if you want to give us your best offer, then we're asking the other person to do the same thing without either person knowing what the other one is doing. And then we take the best one. Well, Mr. Paul's offer was not, was not the highest one. So the other offer was tentatively accepted, but then in the process of us moving forward and inquiring, we found that while his intent, he said, was to keep it in residential. When we tried to inquire a little further, it turned out that perhaps he wasn't going to really use it as residential, but it was going to be vacant or maybe even parking for a facility on St. John's Avenue. So of course, we rejected that that bid at that point. Now, our intent is to put it back out with the realtor on the listing and allow persons to submit offers again. But in the meantime, Mr. Sheffield submitted this proposal. And I put it on the agenda for the city to consider, even though I cannot tell you that I believe it's one that the city should accept. My purposes for saying that are as follows. This proposal would apply to the entire parcels, both the vacant property that we have a contract to to sell for thirty thousand, as I've already mentioned, and the property that Hammacall sits on. Now, understand the contract for thirty thousand is one which, as any other property or any other offer, the first property from the city, I signed a specific contingency that it is subject to approval by the city commission. So my signature does not bind the city to buy. It is specifically subject to the city commission's decision to accept that offer, and that is stated in the contract. But we do have a contract that I signed subject to the city commission's approval for the thirty thousand dollars on the vacant lot. Now, which would mean we'd have to get one forty five out of Hammacall building in order to come up with one seventy five, if you want to use my number for comparison. So Mr. Sheffield's offer is for one seventy five, although I guess his item number three on his first page is inaccurate in that he states he has the down payment of twenty five and five payments of twenty five each, which obviously would only reach a total of one fifty instead of one seventy five. But then if you look at the next sentence down this list, payment dates, that totals fifty, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight. I assume instead of five installment payments, he meant six installment payments. Or either he needs to draw up one of the years where he's going to be making a twenty five thousand dollar payment in order to make it consistent. However, his offer basically has the city financing the property at zero interest. So his offer is a twenty five thousand dollar down payment within the city getting into the loan business and financing the property at zero interest for, I guess that would be six more years, so total of seven years. If I'm, if I'm reading that correctly. I think that that opens a door that's very precarious for the city in that you've got a number of surplus properties that it is the intent to sell, put it back in the public domain so that the demand we now have for indoor housing might be partially met by private individuals who build. If you're going to make an offer to finance this lot with a twenty five thousand dollar down payment, I have a hard time understanding how you're going to be able to tell the next person who buys surplus property from the city that you won't finance their property for zero interest as well. In addition, Mr. Sheffield's offer involves, and would have to be contingent, if you were to accept it tonight, would have to be contingent upon the C R A agreeing to some things. The first thing is, if you look at this page four, the C R A would have to commit to awarding him a grant of the amount of twenty five thousand dollars to can come to to make repairs, which that is tax payer money. I mean, I know people like to think it's C R A money, but those are tax dollars that are with, are being, that would be utilized. And he's asking for a commitment that those bonds be paid back to him along with two thousand dollars annually for the next twenty years to cover repairs. So that would mean the C R A would have to take a commitment to give him a grant of twenty five thousand. By the way, we don't have a grant cycle open right now that I'm aware of that has twenty five thousand dollar in it. So if they were to try to award that, if they were trying to fund this request, they would have to come out of their reserves with that because it's not in a budgeted line item for grants. And then they have to agree and commit to twenty years of two thousand a piece. And I'm not even sure our C R A plan launched in twenty years. I'm not even sure we got twenty years left on there. So. So, but, but you understand, that's, that's two, twenty year commitment of two thousand dollars a year made by this C R A board imposed upon every C R A board for the next twenty years, which I would suggest to you creates problem. So from, and then one, one more thing. In his page three, he talked about a conversation with me where he clarified for me that his offer contained only one of the three concerns that I had. The three concerns I had had to be with seller financing, which is true, zoning change and a use of TIF funds. He says that only one of those three were real concerns, but in fact, I believe all three of those were real concerns. And then his very proposal says he wants to use TIF funds for twenty five thousand dollar grant on repairs and then two thousand dollars here for twenty years. Seller financing, which we've already addressed, and the zoning change, which he says isn't required. This is something that Ms. Walsh can talk to, but if you'll recall our whole conversation about the use of that property. The, if the property is zoned R one, the R one zoning district takes into account conditional uses that are allowed by the R one, R one A, and R one double A. Under the R one double A district, there is a conditional use between the follows. Condition, a a use would be allowed by conditional use for a private bath, swim, tennis, or country club, none of which I understand he is proposing, for a community owned and operated recreation club and association. The proposal is that Sheffield Family Properties LLC buy the property. And I assume they would own it unless he's committing to deed it to a community organization or association to operate a association. So my opinion remains that you'd have to rezone the property to to C one, which allows it by conditional use, with, I'm sorry, which allows it by use, permissible use, C one does. Which we tried before and was turned down by the planning commission. Or you'd have to make a test amendment to your conditional use definition under R one A A to essentially clarify, according to Sheffield. And, and I assume. And I assume make it possible for the. Recreation club or association to be privately owned in order for it to to follow then a conditional use in the R one A A district. So. From my perspective, um there are a number of concerns with uh his proposal, but. The proposal is for you to consider, and so I brought it forward for the commission to consider.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the people?
Um, and I and I agree, and I, as somebody who does reside in that neighborhood, I had concerns about whether those folks in that. Were aware of this commitment, what asked about, whether they were in agreement of this kind of commitment. For many years of those TIF funds and. I I was aware because of this process, but was not aware as a member of that neighborhood, it was not my concern, nor is given to any neighbors. That the proposal was gonna work. Um, as well as I I really think would setting ourselves up. Um, for future concerns when we become a lender, a bank, which the city is.
I'm just gonna tell you, uh, Mr. Barnes, how to handle it.
Firstly, overall, um in short, I brought my concern um to Mister Holmes. And I'm tad bit concerned about us becoming lenders and setting the precedent of. What could come. Um, so overall, I'm not in favor of the proposal, simply because we're not a lending.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes, uh I I am also um not comfortable with the uh. With the proposal based on um the clarification that our city manager brought forth. Uh, but the only current concern that I I I have is that. The, you know, the way that the parcels are are broken out. Uh and be and to be sold separately, I would like to just see everything go as one package, because I I think it is gonna be a problem. Uh, if it's uh purchased uh separately based on how uh. The properties are, you know, if you're gonna sell a lot and then you're gonna sell Hammacall, you know, if somebody get the lot, then, you know, Hammacall. What's the use in having it, because you don't have any property? So that's just my concern.
For clarification sake, Commissioner Holmes, I'm sending the homes. There is a conditional lot, there's a lot that Hammacall sits on, and the second lot adjacent to that. And then there's the third lot, just for clarification. So Hammacall would have a combination of two lots.
So if you look at, there's a diagram. I'm gonna get to hold it up. Okay.
Can I make a little difference, sir?
I appreciate that. Me too.
That might be too many, but.
No, I mean, I think that's fine. So, uh. Jonathan, perhaps you could, maybe can you walk up there and explain the configuration?
Yes, um as you can see. This goes down parcel right here is essentially the limits of the existing Hammacall building. It's on its own lot with a zero lot line. This is an existing lot here and an existing lot here. You can see the the line of demarcation. This is how they were split, parcel one and parcel two, equally point two eight acres. So the offer you have in front of you tonight, thirty thousand, which is in excess of the list price, which was nineteen thousand. Is for the vacant parcel here, leaving additional vacant land. Beside and around the rear of Hammacall, the building.
So. Maybe that's, and that's a much better explanation than than I gave, actually. So you see that you do have space adjacent to Hammacall, both on its. Yes, that would be its nor'easterly side and its southeasterly side. In addition to the actual footprint, and you still have the lot to its northeast. So those are the two lots that would have, that would have been, would be created by the lot split and the. Market analysis of the vacant lot parcel two was like nineteen thousand dollars or so, that was the high, yes. And the bids that we got, same process we used, we had two bids or two offers, they were the same, basically. Uh, he went back to both and said, I'm not telling you what the other one bid, but give me your best offer, and you will know what the other one bid. And we got a thirty thousand dollar bid on that vacant lot. So uh eleven thousand dollars above what the market analysis was for it. I don't think Miss Korea was 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 surprised, though, with that.
It's kind of the average from that neighborhood, but also that goes against size lots from that neighborhood. There are some that size, but they're not the common. Dominator in that neighborhood, they're usually much smaller lots, so.
So you really wouldn't be creating a small lot upon which Hammacall would rest. Hammacall is currently would be. Equal to or greater than the average lot in that area.
It actually would be greater too. You can see there are dimensions on the drawing. The excess land uh to the north of Hammacall is forty-three feet, the width of Hammacall is thirty-eight feet, and it leaves you fifty and then. Fifty point five feet behind Hammacall, then make it one in.
Question, so. The broker's opinion. Of the value, excuse me, it includes partial one into, is that correct? The broker's opinion, he split the parcels up, as I recall, in his bargain analysis. He felt it the most marketable way. Earlier, we had tried to sell it in whole, remember, we didn't get many good offers. So then he came back and said, I think you're gonna be better off if you make a, do a lot split, create a vacant lot. Sell it separately from the other, and he gave independent assessments of both. And his broker's analysis of the vacant lot was nineteen, we came back with a thirty. I think he had a high and a low on Hammacall with remaining parcel.
Two twenty-five and one eighty.
One eighty, high of two twenty-five and a low of one eighty on the uh parcel. The the Hammacall and the area surrounding it, as it's described there as parcel one. So.
Any further questions?
And we, and just the sheer amount of concern is the same sentiment that the lender are. You just.
You did have some public comments on this particular item. Ms. Roach?
And I'm gonna be frank, I I have problems with one of this. Okay, the city holding note, definitely noted that. Uh but you 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 expressed interest and you said that you. He put in a bid when we asked for bids as well. But did you have any uh alternate source of funding that if you. Of course, to write bodies out, the utility, so, but first of all. From the presentation of my offer is uh is inadequate. It is what? It's inadequate. Inadequate? Yes, okay, you you say that condition of the the offer here. Uh, on a new site of the the page where it talks about the. Uh, the TIF funds being a requirement here, the sentence before that, if you read that sentence. What is, what does that say that that my wife and I are asking? We're asking that the city staff, commissioners, C R A and community to support. Our efforts to obtain approval. We, it is not a condition of this of this offer. We were asking, because if you if you, in in the beginning, let me let me back up, if I if I can, I know I'm not asking your your question correctly. February twenty twenty-two, when I stood before you and 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 you guys said, well, no, go back with the city and re renegotiate. Come up with something in terms of a plan that could work. This is what this is trying to get at, and it has multiple layers to it, because even after that, we had all the meetings that Mister Holmes uh went to. And the and the community came and voiced very loudly. That one, they didn't wanna see the zoning change. Two, they wanted it to remain a community center. However. In February or some of the 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 doors were closed. And this um at at you guys' request. And the six months went by that then triggered, where it couldn't be used as a community center anymore, it had to go back. So. What this is doing is this. What what I, my wife and I are really trying to solve, step in and solve a problem here. The city was trying to, the minimum bid that you put out there was one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And when it when it went out for bid, you didn't get any word in, I'm I'm sorry, but I don't think what the broker is saying, you have evidence. That that property is not worth that. He can speak up all numbers and give you highs and lows, but it's not the reality of what what the what. Community is is coming in and saying. So this hundred and seventy-five thousand. Cause I look at it two ways, I'm a CPA, I'm 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 gonna count the present value of that is about one hundred and fifty-three thousand. That's stated in in uh in here, uh because I'm considering that, so add a swing of five percent. That's above what your minimum uh bid request was for for that. I understand the situation in terms of becoming a banker, because one of the things I was looking at is that. You're selling a property, but in in all reality, the citizens of this city have said. No, you as the new owner can't use it as freely as you want to. We want to make sure this remains a community center, we don't want this rezoned to something else. So my wife and I said, well, if all of us are giving and taking, trying to give the citizens what they want in this, then. And the, because the other piece that we looked at is this, because if I would have came back to you guys as commissioners and say, well. What if for the next six years, because the the whole thing came up with this whole dollar rent thing and organizations getting away with this and. The city really holding the bag, but what? Mister Holmes doesn't get to is this page, and you go to page six. Well, back back up, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay. What this proposal does, and when I say the stakeholders involved, number one, it makes the impossible for the for it to remain a community center. Which an overwhelming number of the uh community got got to. It provides this opportunity of for professional management, it keeps it a key contributor to the economic development. Uh for activities like the Porch Fest. What it does, and I, and you guys gotta speak to the legal end of this, but that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, what it's doing is this. It's returning what the city spent out of this general fund, and these are estimates that I got, just like. I got information from uh the association, I got information from the city as to what's been spent. And so it would return the twenty-two thousand from the general fund. It would actually return the fifty-three thousand that was taken out of the TIF uh funds. To to the TIF, that's if this is all going back to the same source that it came out of. And then add another thirty-five thousand to that. So this sale here would give the South historic district TIF. Another eighty-eight thousand dollars to go through and do new projects that have nothing. To do with us uh attaining Hammacall. And then on top of that, because and if you don't allow number six here. Which is looking at the twenty-five thousand uh for repairs, which any property owner can apply for. It's not a special uh uh permission, we're asking any property owner can apply for this and receive this, and yes. This would give eighty-eight thousand dollars back to be poured back into that community. That's even after giving a twenty-five thousand and a forty thousand dollar commitment. Uh, in terms of over, because we're committing to keep this as a community center for thirty years. What we're, my wife and I are trying to do is answer what this community and you want. Put up there as what the problems were, and I'm saying it's gonna cost each of us something to get to a solution that'll work as a whole for the city. Now, an alternative to this is uh because when when I spoke to uh Mister Holmes, he mentioned it. The concern about the finance piece, I said, well, what if we had come to you and said, well. Can you lease it to us for twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next six years? And do a purchase option where we we buy from you for a dollar after that. It hasn't changed, you're not, you're, and so what would the answer of that? You could you could. Go in frame the finances in a lot of different ways. Um, but that would answer in getting you away from these dollar rents. This being on your, you guys' dime, in terms of the city, yes, we wanna go to the TIF fund and request what any other. Uh resident in that area has the opportunity to request. And so I I wanna harp in, because this is what I was getting to in my comment earlier. The spin on what my proposal does in terms of returning all of this money. Um, and my wife and I then taking the risk of earning this over time. Uh, because I'm saying all of us need to step up and contribute something to make this 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 solution come about. So that's that's my recents, if you will, because I don't know if you have the the. Because after I spoke with him, I also offered, because he he said on this page here, if you go back to four. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm I'm walking this. Okay, here it is here, where I mentioned where I spoke, you know, because I don't know why he didn't put this out as an option also. Is, we would offer the leases from the city on a sixty-six month lease. With an option to buy for for one dollar at the end of that lease. We still give the twenty-five thousand dollars at closing and have annual lease payments, and then here I got it right, Mister Holmes, six over. Um, yeah, congratulations, or thank you. Um, twenty-five thousand uh each. Um, and and so this gets you there without being the lender. Um, it's still, and so what I'm about is, we can find a solution to this, I I am. I'm really fed up after, and I'm a new citizen here, two years will be June. Um, but the process is here and trying to get to a solution and people willing to give. In order to make something work is is really getting frustrated for from from my wife and I. We think this is an absolute gem, as I've been saying for the last year and some whatever months. Um, but anyway, okay.
Thank you.
In lieu of us, to know that, did you have a resource to purchase it? Alright, okay. Let me, let me answer that that question, okay? That could be a possibility. But when I look at myself as a businessman and investor. Once again, you're asking me to put in a hundred full, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from somewhere else. That I can be investing, investing where I don't have the limitations, where I gotta keep it at its certain use. And really look at it as as serving the community. I have to invest where I can uh make money, so I'm I'm, that, this is the reason why I'm looking at a lease. Or or the seller fi- financing to to do this because of the thirty-year commitment. We wanna make to this community to keep it a a useful and vibrant community center, and so I think that's only fair. If all of us pitch in and not just chat at myself.
And I, that's very generous, I I just, again, I'm back to the city of not set up and does not need.
The the city doesn't lease uh property?
Not at that, not to that degree, no.
Okay, but you're leasing, these types of centers. You're you're leasing centers for community use for a house. And you're saying you would turn down this offer?
Also, uh when we get back to the zoning, you would have to have that changed. Yes, the neighborhood was not in favor of the zoning change, they were not in favor of the zoning change, so it didn't happen. It's still zoned R one, and for you to come back and you you have to get that approval as well.
But why are you guys looking up into our future and trying to interpret that as opposed to. Dealing with the deal before you, because I truly believe that we can marshal the support to get that change. And do whatever we need to do, I'm not making it contingent upon doing that. What you guys are trying to do, in my view. Is look ahead and determine, because I don't believe, honestly, I don't believe you want my wife and I to have.
It's not about you personally.
No, 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 because if I look at the actions. If I look at the action, that how our our letter of intent was ignored, how the pain of our offer is presented to you. As an essential maker, I'm I'm very discouraged with that. And so look at the facts, that's all I, all I want you to do, and so I don't think it's fair for you to say, well. I can't accept your offer because I don't think you can do this, I don't think you can do that, I don't think you can, would you? Why are we being treated in that manner?
I don't think we're doing that either, so you're vanished, but I, and if you have any questions.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify and put on the record, when you speak. When you speak to an individual, speak to an individual and not speak to us as a whole, again. Uh, allow me to finish. Oh, because when you say you think we don't want you to have it, that's inaccurate. I'm not, I have not said that. I did not say that. We, I didn't believe, my whole thing about it, because I was the one who made the motion to have Hammock Hall. So is that the process that happens for everybody? The process, who did you submit it, did you submit yours through the Realtor?
Yes, I did that also. I, I, because when you guys told me you didn't hear, and first of all, let me apologize. I do apologize, commissioners, and group of you all, in, in that, that was not my intent, and so I wanna correct that for, for, for the record. I, I do apologize for, for that. But I, I was dealing with because when, when, um, uh, I turned it into the city, uh, uh, to, to both, uh, uh, Mr. Holmes and to Val, uh, the way the letters of intent were supposed to go, go to both of those. I did not hear back. I physically came up and asked if I could have a couple of minutes with you. I met with, and he promised that he'd get it for you. I don't know about it. It didn't, didn't happen. So that's what was going on with that. And then when I came to the meeting and saw that it was you guys approved to put it to a Realtor, and so that's why I asked a couple of you after the meeting, were you aware of the, and you guys didn't know? So I, I'm not sure why. Um, but, uh, whatever's going on in this process, uh, just doesn't seem to be, and, and, and I just, when I've laid it out very carefully here and a page like this is skipped, a page like getting where that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is going back to all of the individuals and what to do for the community is skipped. Um, I don't, I don't agree with that as a character re- characterization of this, of this offer. And so I guess that's what you're.
I'm gonna respond. First of all, I don't accept his statement that I promised to get his letter of intent to you. Just like his offer to the Realtor, he was so far below the market and the other offers that were being made, he simply didn't make the cut. And this, his concept and argument that he, you're asking him to give you him a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, which is gonna go back to the community, no, you're not asking to do anything. You're putting it out there for sale. Someone else pays a hundred fifty, it also is gonna go back into the community. It also is gonna go back presumably into the TIP fund. He's not unique in that regard. The sales price, except that they're gonna make it a cash offer, and he's asking to do it in installments. If you're going to put it out as a lease with a one dollar option to buy, that is in essence an installment purchase. If you're gonna put that out there and make it available to other people, you'll probably have more people make the, uh, offer of, of purchase. So, you know, um. Yeah, I am done for this second.
Well, and, and, and I'll say this, and I'll be completely done. Um, I just think we're, we're using the word community a little bit loosely. Because what I have a problem with is that residents that live in that area, they're not with the proposal. So, and this is, this is not the first time, and this is not so much you. We've heard where other individuals who have proposed the buying of Hammock Hall spoke for the whole South Side Historic District. And essentially, he spoke for a few people who was in his circle. And so when we speak of community and when we speak of in favor of, who exactly are we speaking of? Who, who had, having, I mean, because we've had people that come on front and just speak against. So, um, that's why I'm a little bit confused as well. Okay, got you.
Although I can add to that. I think you were one of those individuals that voted in part, in part of that, when that individual came up and said, because I'm happy for the community. You were on the voting side of that. Okay?
Now, once again, in this proposal right here, it goes through and makes it very clear in the letter that Sheffield Family Properties would be making decisions upon the use of, of this property. We did, we're, what we're talking about doing is serving the community. This wasn't a proposal from the community. This is a proposal from my wife and I, and it's spelled out in here that we would make these decisions. Uh, with, but what we wanted to do, if you go to, I mean, we, we wanna set up an advisory committee from the community, one of those from the north, the south, the business district, city representative, to advise us on the use of, of this, because we wanna use it and we're committed to use it for the, and that's the other, that's the thing. The other buyers, you're saying to do, they're not committing, they're not using this for the community.
Right.
That's, that is the clear distinction when you talk about what's going on with this proposal. Um, and so in this same proposal, it feeds to the decision-making there and what we wanna set up as an advisory. There, there's too much angst and angst, and I don't think there's been good movement. If you've got so many cooks in, in, in the kitchen on, on this, we've seen this with this. So to clarify that, my, my wife and I would be making the decisions. Um, we'd be, uh, engaging and it laid out in here what that, that advisory committee would look like. Because, and we would be committing to utilizing this for the community the city of, of, of Palaka, um, for, for thirty years. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, if I should move in this forward, I'll be interested in him, but those.
Getting to that point. Um, Ms. Roach, name and address, please, keep it to three minutes.
So, Roach, three minutes after that is really, really difficult. Um, I am a resident of South Historic District. Um, I have a proper residence. I know I contribute daily to my community and my neighborhood by maintaining my property, by paying my property taxes, by supporting my community. I don't think that Hammock Hall has to be a, a community center any longer. Uh, I would prefer it to be sold as a residential property, and I do think there is interest. As far as anybody not feeling, um, welcome before CRA or the city commission pertaining to proposals and, uh, TIP money and hip money. Um, the HIP program was suspended for over two years. Um, many residents had, were told that term maintenance was what needed to be done, opposed to any kind of allotment of TIP money, uh, to the health improvement of, of the South Side. We were considered entitled and demanding and selfish. Um, I don't accuse Mr. Sheffield of that. I know that I'm, the perception was something that was created and perpetuated, and we all deal with it. Uh, moving forward, um, it's a low-ball offer. It's an offer that is supported by the city or funded by the city. And, uh, I just don't think it's really the right move for the community. Um, no votes have been discussed. No associating, association meetings have been called, nothing. I need to say that a private entity is buying or, or doing this for the community is, is just not a fair representation. Thank you.
Mr. Man? Again, name and address, please, in three minutes.
Robert Mann, eight fifteen Laurel Street. I feel like a bottlehead doll right now. My head's going in an empty different direction. Uh, I, I commend Madam Mayor, Commissioner Holmes, for your thoughts and comments and all this. I firmly agree that it is not a great offer. If we look at it, like you said, it's seller financing. The city's not in the business to do that. And then if you look at asking for twenty-five thousand dollars in CRA firms, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you process, you make the bid and you're awarded, you can only get up to fifty percent of the twenty-five thousand. Is that correct? Okay, so again, strike two. You know, it just becomes an ongoing battle. Again, uh, I think it's, it's not the decision. It's not the appropriate thing to do. If you look at, you've got an offer for a partial lot at thirty thousand. It was offered at nineteen, so you're plus eleven. Hammock Hall property, listed at two twenty-five, below a one eighty. So even if you get a hundred eighty for it, you're plus money on the existing sale of the property. I see a good thing splitting the properties and letting someone build a house on that adjacent lot. And then the other lot and Hammock Hall for sale, hopefully do what they have to do there. That's my comment. Thank you, two times.
Ms. Kitchens?
I lead from kitchens, in hundred and seven South 12th Street, Platte, Florida. Uh, staying back and listening, I have two, uh, two points to make. I'm either for it or against it. That's up to you, you folks. Uh, the first thing I noted is that Mr. Holmes was talking about the, the previous, the previous applicant that wanted to buy the vacant lot when they checked into it. They found out he wanted to use it as a parking lot for his ancient, uh, business. And I thought, well, that, that's admirable, glad they checked into it. But then the question arose in my mind, BMT Homes is who is proposing to buy the, uh, vacant lot. So what does BMT Homes plan to do with it? Are they gonna try to get a, a zoning change for multi-family? Are they going to try and do a parking lot? And so I would think that the other one of his questions is what he's gonna do and is look into. I hope that BMT Homes has been looking into and finding what they're gonna put there. Uh, the other thing, just simply this, the city does have other leases. I talked to an art league member about two weeks ago, and they informed me that the art league now leases, uh, leases a zoning house for three hundred dollars a month. So the city does apparently do leases for more than a dollar. And that's just a point of interest. Whether you all want to lease it or not, that's up to you, but I just wanna make those two points. And I was concerned about what is BMT Homes, uh, what they plan to do? Are they aware of the zoning? Are they aware of the historic, uh, district overlay? Question is basically rhetorical, but it's something for you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Name and address, Mr. Brinkley? Three minutes, please.
Rick Paul, thirteen oh five South Porter. Sunny, can you bring up the map again, the flat? I'm, I'm interested in the whole piece. And again, it would be residential, and what we were thinking about originally um, is on.
Hang on, let me flip it around.
Okay.
You can go right there.
Oh, yes. So along Kirby Street, we put a picket fence coming down, and we want both lots because eventually, can I come over here, Donna, is that okay?
Sure.
We would put a porch on this side and make that the main entryway. Uh, right there. So punch a few windows out, a door, have a nice porch, the driveway would come in this way. Uh, maybe later put a garage engine back here. But there's some things, obviously, that, you know, would, would have to get approval from the historical board, adding the porch, windows, the door. Um, there, there's, uh, just two bathrooms in there without a shower. You'd have to add a shower. You'd have to in, uh, put in interior, um, uh, partitions walls, uh, to go in there and that sort of thing. So that's what we, you know, we were envisioning, having a porch out here and being able to look across to both of them. And have the whole piece, maybe put a little garden out there or something on those ones. So, um, that was our intent with the property, and we would be interested in, in the whole of this.
Oh, your offer.
Uh, what we didn't offer, uh, we offered on the lot first, and then went back and went into that, into Hammock Hall. And we're evaluating it and coming up with our plan when we found out that I didn't get the original bid on the other lot. At that point, we just, we stopped pursuing it because we wanted the whole piece. So we're trying to keep it all as original as possible, just basically adding the porch on that side, putting a picket fence in here and having a garden. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I said, what's the?
Yeah, I said, what's the?
Oh, the sealed bid originally was for nineteen thousand, so my first offer was for the full nineteen thousand. Then we came back and said, uh, there are other people, uh, making offers. Uh, so we went to twenty-three oh one, I think, and then I think the other two gentlemen outbid to twenty-five, and then I guess it ended up at thirty.
But you didn't make an offer on Hammock Hall?
On Hammock Hall, no, because you were, you were trying to get the first lot and then combine it with Hammock Hall uh, and go that way. So, uh, whatever you guys decide is fine. I would like to make a, a suggestion. Um, I think it would be better if you just had a good old fashioned bidding war on the city hall steps instead of being sealed bid.
Well, that would be painful.
Well, it'd be painful, but at least everybody kinda knows where.
Well, we're fixing a Realtor, and that's where we have a contract with.
Well, it sounds like a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else with public comments on this topic, in and out? Thank you. Public comment? Any other comments from the commission? Commission board, I don't know if they're with us. I don't know. I can't see whether he knows.
Stop sharing, something to hand.
Yeah.
No, I don't have my hand out.
Okay. Right, Commissioner Jones?
So leaving here, um, the decision is to continue looking for buyers for the realtor, for that, that way we are.
Um, on Hammock Hall, the, um, the decision would be to leave it listed with the Realtor. If we sell, if you approve the contract for the thirty thousand, then it would be leaving just that piece of property with the, the listing with the Realtor. And I think that's, I don't know, I think it is listed at the high number right now. So, I mean, there'd be room to come down as, as common by, um, you know, like you, like with any other listing, like with any other listings.
Now, I know you, Mr. Holmes, you're a can-do guy. And I think this more wanna be a can-be board. This, this is a, it's a question. Or a board, considering. I think, sound like what I heard, the sense of saying that we're not gonna get into the leasing business. We're not gonna do that. I agree with that. Um, but it is, it is an offer for just that piece of property that said, uh, property one, that was labeled property one, which is just the Hammock Hall and the, uh, immediate parking rally. Is that the offer that you were making for that piece of property or the one seventy-five?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I need, that's what I wanna know, for my.
So the thirty thousand, it's on, on, it's the offer for the thirty thousand for parcel one, right? And then leave the other piece.
I guess parcel property.
Parcel to thirty thousand for parcel two. Then we can leave the other, uh, to the property, right?
I think that's the decision, I love it. Um, okay, so that probably what we follow. Do we need to make an motion on that?
You would need a motion, yes.
I wanna put motion in for that.
Okay. Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Anything that, now, I'm to discuss, aye. Regulation on it. What we were talking about, to say a lot of.
That's done.
Okay.
You just did.
Okay. So we're all set there. Um, going on to public hearings. A, P P case twenty-three oh one?
Madam Mayor, if you'll give me a moment, I'm a little. But, but, you know, still, my bad. ordinance number twenty-two-three oh seven. The ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Palaka, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as Palaka Cedar Grove, map book three, page one nine two, lots thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and the north half of lot thirty-three, excluding official records book two forty-one, page one sixty-one R D. Also note that part of closed Hampton Road, official records six-two-six, page one eighty-five, excluding state rate nineteen, parcel two ten twenty-six sixty-eight seventy four zero zero three four zero five ten West House, House Avenue, continues to the boundaries of the city of Palaka, providing for scrimmerage areas and providing for a protected safe.
Oh. Ms. Roach?
Thank you, Madam Chair, who's a Walsh manager. This is to, a request to annex approximately just under an acre, um, at the corner. Then it would be on the northeast corner of Toll Avenue, it's zero nineteen. Want to give it a, um, land use, future land use, designated commercial and rezone it to C two intensive commercial. So it currently in the, in the county is, uh, future land use of urban service and zoning, uh, their, uh, their C two commercial. The applicant is seeking to construct a front on the Russell, two months of credit, the warrant to. One seven, and they recommend their approval. Do you have to be answering questions?
Yes, I have, of course. That, uh, it depends on whether it's gonna be a restaurant.
it depends on what it's going to be a restaurant, but um the zone changing. If the county had for light commercial, you know, and we're talking about changing the the zone to commercial intensive C two. Can you explain that to me? I tell me, what what would be the impact of that?
The county's C two is actually very similar to our C two. And that our C two, they would each allow a restaurant with a large part of the lot and um certain percentages of impervious surface. The use of a restaurant would it would be permitted in either of those districts. And C two is especially very comparable to our C two. We just call it on something a little different.
But there's the the labeled light and this one, what catches my eye says intensive.
I understand. The counties, I don't know the exact uses that are permitted in the county C two light. But they're they are similar in the intensity. So for example, they utilize C three and C four or or a development that we use in our due to the mall. It was even more intensive.
So our C two is kind of labeled as highway um accessible properties or uses that depend upon highway traffic, our C two does. So and of course, this is a directly on highway nineteen. Uh, this this parcel is at the corner of nineteen and Toll Road, um, about a block north of Ratty's Restaurant. Um, and so it is how highway and uh highway oriented usage.
And 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 the second question is when we when we annex like that, it's supposed to be contiguous. So that's all county. There's no city property that's that's buttoned up to that property.
State road nineteen, the right of way for state road nineteen was actually annexed in the city back in the late eighties.
But we don't we don't service it in anything nowhere. That's weird.
It is weird, but it is the thing that permits us to. It it is weird and it's actually something that the state no one commits.
You know, Commissioner, just you're, you may recall, you may not recall, but uh, that's how we got the hi, the hospitals and they used highway twenty as the corridor that was contiguous to the city limit.
Right.
Yeah. So that that would be a big question, like I don't say.
Here, I mean, with the similar tactic in order to capture the jail and the and the bus yard.
That enough means that's legal. Is it, if we ask a question, um not for me, but what kind of restaurant? Like, would it be a franchise or?
It would, uh, it's proposed to be a monopop kind of operation. It's not a chain or or a franchise. Um, and I understand that the flavor of the restaurant would be southern cooking.
Okay, we got a little early information. Okay, any other question? Okay, we have a motion second. All favor, um, ordinance, we have a public hearing, Madam Mayor. Sorry, this is the public hearing, the public. Open after public hearing. Uh, anybody here for public comment? Saying now, we'll close with a comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? On to B, Ms. Crin.
Um, actually, we need to do the next part of that.
Two, okay.
Thank you. Um, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh nine. It's come to you for adoption. Um, whereas the other was first hearing, this requires one hearing. Um, an ordinance of the city of Palaka, providing that the fish, uh, yeah, my, the wrong one, I think, the wrong one, my apologies. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh eight, an ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land less than fifty acres in size from Putnam County Urban Service to the city of Palaka Commercial for the following property, five ten West Tolls Avenue, Palaka, Florida, three two one seven seven. Palaka Cedar Grove, mapbook three, page one ninety-two, lots thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and the north half of lot thirty-three, excluding official records book two four one, page one sixty-one. R D also that part of closed Hampton Road, official records book six twenty-six, page one eighty-five, excluding state road nineteen. Parcel number two ten twenty-six sixty-eight seventy eight four zero zero three four zero, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaka, providing for discrimination and providing for an effective date.
Oh, second.
Open up to public comment, any other comments? And now we close public comment, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Okay, moving on to two being announced to be building ordinance.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh nine, ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palaka, Florida, be amended from Putnam County Commercial Journal Light C two. The city of Palaka Commercial Intensive C two for the following property, five ten West Tolls Avenue, Palaka, Florida, three two one seven seven, Palaka Cedar Grove, mapbook three, page one ninety-two, lots thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, north half of the lot thirty-three, excluding official records book two forty-one, page one sixty-one. R D also that part of closed Hampton Road, official records book six two six, page one eighty-five, including state road nineteen. Parcel number two ten twenty-six sixty-eight seventy zero 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 zero, zero three four zero, providing for severability, providing for discrimination and providing for an effective date.
Anybody here for public comments?
No, I don't. So that the citizen is thirty eighteen Reed Street, so that's not the same location.
That's the next one.
Oh, my bad.
Anybody in public comment, standing on or closed? All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Okay, now we're moving on to B.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Palaka, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as thirty-eight fifteen Reed Street, part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, official records book thirty-eight, page five fifty-eight, parcel two ten twenty-six zero 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 three six zero 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 zero, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaka, providing for discrimination and providing for an effective date.
Same quote.
Sunny, can you pull up the map, please? This is the piece of property right at the entryway to Lowe's on Reed Street. Just to the east of that entryway and there's currently a a spreader there that is not in the store. Confinement store. So this is a half acre, it's under a half acre parcel property. And we are looking to annex it and change the future land use designation from Putnam County Urban Services to City of Palaka Commercial. And we zone the same from Putnam County Commercial General Light C two to City of Palaka Commercial Intensive C two. Any theory on the automotive oriented development? And in this case, there's money that property around it and also zone C two already. And that was also the case with the previous one.
Got it.
Any other questions?
I'm going to open up the public comments. Are you ready here? Do you get a item for public comment? Saying now, we close the public comment. All in favor? Aye, any opposition? Okay, on to the next one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, I would note that the plume requires one reading, so this is brought to you for adoption. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three eleven, an ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land less than fifty acres in size from Putnam County Urban Services U S to City of Palaka Commercial Comp for the following property, thirty-eight fifteen Reed Street, Palaka, Florida, three two one seven seven, part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, official records book thirty-eight, page five fifty-eight, parcel two ten twenty-six four zeros, zero three six zero four zeros, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaka and providing for discrimination and providing for an effective date.
Anybody here for public comment? Saying now, we close the public comment. All in favor?
Um, that appears to be some background noise and the commissioner. It was it was background noise. His phone got unmuted.
Um, thank you. Moving on.
I'm sorry, was the motion passed?
Um, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three twelve, an ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, providing that official zoning map of the city of Palaka, Florida, be amended from Putnam County Commercial General Light C two to the city of Palaka Commercial Intensive C two for the following property, thirty-eight fifteen Reed Street, Palaka, Florida, three two one seven seven, part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, official records thirty-eight, page five fifty-eight, parcel two ten twenty-six four zeros, zero three six zero 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 zero, providing for severability, providing for discrimination, providing for an effective date.
So.
Anybody here for comment? Saying now, we close the comment. All in favor? Any opposition? Okay, moving on. Do you see? Ordinance twenty twenty-three oh six.
Thank you very much, Madam Madam Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, amending the city of Palaka comprehensive plan to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven capital improvements on us, known as the C I E, which includes capital improvements that the city intends to fund and hold or intend with development impact fees and other funds and for other purposes, providing for the taking of implementing administrative actions, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for non-codification, and providing for an effective date.
Ms. Roach?
And Madam Mayor, commissioners, um, this is for adoption meeting for the capital improvements. And so it's been it's been transmitted already to the state and come back with no comments from any of the review agencies and staff that have not approved them.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Roach? Um, if you have to public comment, anybody here for public comment? So they will. All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. Um, next, B, ordinance twenty twenty-three fifteen.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we'd let you know as I read the ordinance, we have um the city's pension attorney on the line with us, yes, Anna Parish, um, as I bring this up, okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three fifteen, an ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, revising the code ordinances of the city of Palaka, Florida by revising section two two fifty dot forty-five, saying investment authority restrictions, providing for severability of the provisions, providing for inclusion in the code, repealing all ordinances in conflict with, providing for an effective date and providing for discrimination.
Ms. Parish?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, um, any questions for Ms. Parish? I'm going to open up a public comment. Anybody here for public comment on this particular ordinance? Saying now, we close the comment. All in favor? Aye, any opposition? Okay, thank you. Um, next, one is twenty twenty-three sixteen.
Thank you. An ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, revising the code ordinances of the city of Palaka, Florida, by revising section two two fifty two eighty, saying investment authority and restrictions, providing for severability provision, providing for inclusion in the code, repealing all ordinances in conflict with, providing for an effective date, providing for discrimination.
Ms. Parish, is there any other question? Okay, thank you. Open a public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment on this ordinance? Saying now, we close the public comment. All in favor? Aye, any opposition? Okay, thank you. Um, on to Commissioner Clonex, Commissioner Campbell, any comments? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Barbe, any comments?
Hello. Hello.
Aye, any comments?
I can't hear. I was in, it's loud. Repeat that again, please.
Um, do you have any comments before we close the meeting?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I'm sorry that I couldn't hear. It was kind of loud in there, but yes, I don't have any comments. I want to um just thank the staff for the fine job that they're doing. And again, I'd like to welcome our new finance director um and just let her know that we've already gone through three finance directors already. Uh, that was Logan, yeah, Logan, Matt, and uh, just uh recently with Lawrence. So uh, again, we 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 hope that uh her hundred and twenty-five percent that she gives, that she don't burn herself out. That's all I have.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn.